...ships like this because without scholarships like this, us school board members, when they're available, you know, if we're awarded, we get them. Luckily, I was awarded and I was able to go and I learned so much. And one of the things that I do want to share is that I was learning about Title I. I'm still kind of new even though I've been here for nine months. But I was learning and some of the things we were already doing. And I was really excited to kind of share that with my team and the table. And they're like, where are you from? You know, where are you from? Like Yolanda said, where's Azusa? And so it was really neat to see, you know, what's out there and what's coming and what we, the cabinet team here, it has already brought forth for the board to bring to our school district. And so I feel very confident that we're moving in the right direction. And so with that, let's stay positive and have a great October.
Thank you. Next, our board vice president, Yolanda Rodriguez-Espana.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to thank those parents for being here. I think it's very brave of them to come and state their concerns. And we definitely need to look into these type of situations, but sometimes, you know, when things are going on, we don't know. So, you know, I think it's great that they came up here so that we can, you know, look into it. There's two sides to every story, I do know that. So that's what I want to hear. And I want to thank the students, the fifth grade students. Such a beautiful song. It was so touching. So, and for the, what are those cranes? Did you call them? It was, they even gave us little instructions how we can make our own. So I'm going to try that. So I also went to the Baptist school nights in the elementary, the middle schools and the high schools and the Magnolia transition. And I also went to the adult school, you know, during the week. And it was really great to see so many parents and students. And especially, you know, we always feel that during high school, the parents kind of fall off, you know, as they go in age. But as I seen Gladstone High School, they had a full house. They didn't even have enough chairs for them to sit around there, right, Mr. Fernandez? It was really good. So I'm going to thank all the teachers and all the principals for their hard work, you know, and the parents and all the presentations that were given to the parents regarding their class. I did go to the strategy workshop and Mrs. Marilyn Snyder did a fantastic job as a facilitator. I do appreciate that we did include all the stakeholders, which were the board members, the union representatives, administration, parents, and students in the decision-making. I believe us working together, could we all play a different role in this school district? We can make it happen. The Teachers of the Year Luncheon for Kathy Hendricks. Her dad and her daughter were so proud of her. You know, her dad is really cute. I'm not sure how old he is, but he was very, 94 years old. But he was so proud of his daughter, you know. He always says that, you know, he was proud the day she was born, you know. And she's like, oh, you know. So it was very nice. Kathy Hendricks, well-deserved, well-deserved teacher. I did go to the dessert social where employees, 10 to 40 years of service, administration, certificate, classified employees. And I want to thank all 130 employees for the dedication to our students at Azusa Unified School District. I did go to Gladstone High School where they had the parent forum. The parents were able to have the Chromebook and they were teaching them how to go in the CPM math, how to look, you know, where they want to find homework to help their child and help them with the tutor on the web. And the parents are very excited, you know, to have the Chromebook. And I want to thank the Tulsa teacher, Mrs. Quoc. They say that right? And also Mr. Fernandez did a great job. So I, the last thing I want to just say that Golden Days, Azusa Leaders to Learn Educational Foundation, we're going to have a dinner dance and on Wednesday, the ninth, next Wednesday, ninth of October, 6:00 PM at the Women's Club. And we're going to have the students in the mariachi de Azusa and the orchestra, they will be in, give us entertainment from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. And then we'll have a DJ, dinner dance, raffles, submitting tickets. I have some in my purse, only $15. And we're also going to give you a great dinner. CSCA has offered to come and help us, some of their members, and I'm so proud of them. They want to come and help us serve and it's good to involve all of us in the community. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And for me, we'll be discussing the strategic plan in a little while, so I just, I won't make any comments at this point. So we'll now move to the school board member.
Hello. Good afternoon. I'm sorry. This month at Sierra High School, on October 2nd, we're having our Red Cross blood drive in the NPR at 8:00 AM. On October 9th, okay, on October 9th, we're having our mental health workshop, alcohol prevention at 9:30 AM. On October 10th, we're having our open house in our report card night at 5:30 to 7:30 PM. At Azusa High School, on October 3rd, they are having a college knowledge number one in the parent center at 8:30 AM to 11:00 AM. On October 5th, they are having a SES Canyon cleanup in Azusa Canyon at 8:00 to 1:00 PM. On October 9th through the 11th, Azusa is having an avid northern college tour. On the 10th, they are having ASB drug lie, a blood drive, sorry, at 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. In the same day, they are having a calf astheca in the parent center at 8:30 AM. On the 14th of October, Azusa is participating in the band tournament at Covina High School at 2:00 PM to 10:00 PM. At Gladstone High School, on October 4th, they are having their homecoming rally in the gym at 11:35 to 12:20 PM. On October 5th, they are having their RO, I'm sorry, their JROTC five key run at 6:30 to 3:00 PM. On the same day, they're having their homecoming dance in the gym at 7:00 through 11:00 PM. October 2nd, Gladstone High School and Slosson Middle School are having their choir fundraiser. On the 12th of October, we are having the Azusa Golden Days Parade performance. They are also participating in the JROTC at San Dimas Rodeo Color Guard at 6:30 to 6:00 PM. The same day, we are having the JROTC at the Golden Days Parade at 8:30 to 11:30 AM. On October 13th, the JROTC, they are participating at San Dimas Rodeo Color Guard through 6:30 to 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Vanity. So next, we will have our Assistant Superintendent Mark Bomarito.
Keep it brief, but I just want to say, looking forward to an agenda item, kind of honoring the work the CSCA and the district have done. And that increased conversation, I think, will go a long way to the valued work of our CSCA bargaining.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent Jorge Ronquillo.
Yes, and I want to echo.
Literally.
I want to echo Mr. Bomarito's in a figurative sense, not in a literal sense, words about CSCA. It was a work that I appreciated, that both teams reached and look forward to continue to work with CSCA. I also want to mention that on September 19th, the reps for AEA from each individual site along with their site administrators met for a joint training on the evaluation procedures. This is the second time both groups have met together. And it really was a powerful way for both management and the teachers, reps to come together around an important topic of evaluation and look forward to the continued work around evaluations throughout the course, course of this year. Last time when I was, when I spoke at a board meeting, I talked about my intent to go to sites and continue to work with site leaders and interact with our teachers and our classified employees at the sites. So I'm happy to report that I've gone to all our high schools and have walked classrooms, worked with site administrators. And while I was at Sierra, I was approached to go to the blood drive that they're having tomorrow. So I asked how often we go from the district and they said I'd be the first. So I look forward to being the first to donate blood to an important cause here with our blood drive zone. Look forward to being a part of that. Thank you.
Thank you. And our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction, Arturo Ortega, is out with the team doing work with our California English Learner Literacy Initiative, Kelly. All right, so last we'll have our superintendent give her a report.
Well, good evening, everyone. And I want to echo some of the praise that's gone out, first of all, for the students and the teacher here, Ms. Flanders Lee. I really appreciate hearing from the kids. It's always a joy to hear from the kids. And I want to thank all the teachers who have contributed to the bulletin boards. One of the things I really enjoy visiting the school sites is when you start at one end with the littlest kids, the TK, and you can see the progression all the way up through kindergarten and on and on up to fifth grade. It's a lot of fun to see that. Appreciate all that, that work. And I'm very happy about the HOSA kids to think that our kids are placing out of 15,000 kids, they're in the top. Our students doing that, our students achieving. I want to thank their teacher. And especially, I want to think back to a couple of years ago, about five years ago now, when we brought the idea of having a health sciences academy to Gladstone High School. We were met with enthusiasm and eagerness to get this going, get this opportunity off the ground. And found a fantastic teacher to start it and other teachers who wanted to jump on board with it. And, you know, as happy as we are about what the kids achieved, they couldn't do it without the teachers. So congratulations and thanks to all of them. And I say this true for the STEM lab over at Center. Again, when we went to the school and said, you know, we've got this idea, we've got this engineering pathway over at Azusa High School, we've got this health science academy over at Gladstone. What could the kids do in middle school to get ready for it? And would you be interested in trying something? And so they joined us in looking and finding something that would be good. And that lab is designed with modules to help students decide, do they want to go more towards the health field? Do they want to go more towards the engineering field? And prepare them to go to either high school, depending on their own interests. So really happy about that. The other thing, talking about Kathy Hendricks, Laco, Los Angeles Office, County Office of Education, has an annual luncheon to honor all the Teachers of the Year from each district. And before the luncheon got started, the superintendent of the county, her name is Dr. Deborah Ward, was going around visiting and chatting with people. And then lo and behold, once it actually started and they were introducing various people, she started with a comment saying how wonderful everybody was. And she said, you know, I met this gentleman, a parent of one of our award winners, and he was such a lovely man to talk to, so proud of his daughter. And as he said, he was proud of her from the moment she was born. And that was Kathy's dad who said that. So it was really nice that he got top billing too, as well as she did. And then finally, I wanted to say that I had an opportunity a couple of weeks ago to travel to Washington DC to advocate for more funding for special education. Our government at the federal level had decided many, many years ago that they would fund these costs and pay 4% of the cost. And they've never lived up to that promise. They pay currently about 15%. And it makes it, it's a challenge for all of the districts to figure out, how do we provide the services when we are short on some of the funds? So I appreciate the work that we're doing and we'll continue to find ways to make it work better for our kids. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And now we'll move on to the next section of our agenda, which is item 9.1, a report actions of closed session matters. No action was taken in closed session matter, in closed session, but we will now take action on a few items that were discussed in closed session. So first, we have item 9.1, approved settlement of one case, number ASCW-010358. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve 9.1.
My second.
Motion by Yolanda Rodriguez-Espana, seconded by Adrian Greer. Any discussion? Seeing now, please place your votes, please. Motion passes 5-0. Moving on, we have item 9.2, public employee dismissal release of employee, Government Code Section 54957, consideration of resolution number 192014, elimination of confidential position. What is the motion? Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
I second.
Motion by Jerry Bibles Vogel, seconded by Gabriela Arianez. Any discussion? Seeing now, please place your votes. Motion passes 5-0. Moving on, we have 9.3, student matter, final settlement for the Office of Administrative Hearing Case Number 2019080448, student number 19-201-04. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve 9.3.
Second.
Motion by Adrian Greer, seconded by Yolanda Rodriguez-Espana. Any discussion? Seeing now, please place your votes, please. Motion passes 5-0. Moving on, under item 10.0, general functions, we have number, item 10.1, appoint board representative to the Joint Board of Management of the East Sangiovese Valley Regional Occupation Program and Technical Center. E, yes.
So you're looking for nominations?
Yes.
Sorry. I like to nominate, she's named Cruz Gonzalez. I know she's been doing, being a representative, and I know there's been many changes right now going on. I think it's best that she stays on to continue since she's known, you know, the changes that are happening right now.
Was that a nomination? Do we motion?
That was a motion. The one motion.
I second.
Okay, any discussion? So I, and I do want to have a little discussion. So as Yolanda mentioned, there's been a lot of, so we are part of a joint powers authority and so for our career technical education, we partner with six other districts. And so there's been a lot of working and new superintendent. And she's currently working on, they're working on rewriting the MOU that governs the JPA. And so, yeah, there's a lot of changes happening right now. So I appreciate the nomination and I accept. And so hopefully, we'll see as a district, the value that comes out of the reorganization that's coming. And actually, they're supposed to come and present to our board at some time, probably closer than mid-year in terms of some of the things that they've been. So with that, any more discussion? No? Place your votes, please. Motion passes 5-0. Moving on, we have item 10.2, the 2018-2019 Local Control and Accountability Plan Year End Update.
I'm really pleased to be here this evening to share the update for the 2018-2019 LCAP with you. As I sat here though all evening, I realized that you've already been hearing it. You've already seen some of the great things that have come out of our LCAP, our medical pathway and the HOSA students are part of that. As I listened to our school board rep list the things going on at the high schools, I thought, we have our mariachi program, the orchestra, the college knowledge workshop through families and schools, our band competitions, the choirs. All of those things inform us about the progress of our LCAP and how we're doing and implementing our local control and accountability plan. So I want to share tonight with you just some of the metrics and expenditures for last year's LCAP. I'm going to go ahead and go goal by goal, starting with the first one, which focuses on our students' academic achievement. And this goal is for us to increase student achievement and to focus on narrowing our achievement gaps between student groups. The next slide, you may have already noticed, have the metrics listed and there have been, there's some blanks there. And that's because as of today, the state has not formally released the test scores for district-wide levels and that they are still considered preliminary at this point. And so we don't want to make a public announcement of test scores before the state also makes that public. We do have our targets there. And I just want to remind you, as we're looking at our metrics, that the targets aren't the goals, the targets are our steps that we're taking to reach our goal. Our goal is 100% of our students achieving. Nothing less than that is acceptable. But we make these little goals, these little, I guess, metric steps that we want to take year to year, and we adjust them and refine them as we go along. So you'll see those on the right side as well. The two metrics we do have with Goal One are around our teachers and their credential and assignment, as well as our instructional materials. Goal One expenditures came out, as you can see on this slide, just about 147,000 under our full budget. This is for 18 different actions and services that we fully implemented in Goal One. There we go. Goal Two focuses on our English learners in the district. And we focus on not only increasing their academic language development and the reclassification rate, but also decreasing the number of LTALs or long-term English learners that we have in our district.
I have a question on that.
Sure, on the goal.
Yes. Yeah, my question is, I like to see the three years, in three years, on the reclassification, how they have changed or they have progressed? Please? Thank you.
Yes, I can pull up that in the actual LCAP annual update for you, or I can get that to you in a Friday report.
A Friday report is fine. Thank you.
Yes. Right down. Okay, thank you. So again, waiting on our finalized Sback California test scores, we look at our reclassification rate. We currently, our annual count is at 15% of our students in 2018-2019 reclassified. I just want to note, the metric at the bottom is a little unusual because we are going through a transition time of implementing the new state language assessment, the LPAC. Not to be confused with the LCAP, by the way, but the LPAC, because it was first started last year, they were implementing it with an initial test and then an ongoing test. And so in the meantime, we were asked to also use another measure of progress for our EL students during the 18-19 year. And that's what you see there as we look at our local district assessments and the growth of our English learners over the course of last year on those English language arts assessments.
Yeah, and if they could just be by grade level, I appreciate that.
For this one, yes.
Yes.
Also, another quick question. Do we know when we expect to have the final results back on the Sback?
Memo I read from CD, went through with a preview period. They are not public, just officials. And. But I can't speculate what that date will be. When we look at our expenditures for Goal Two. And all actions and services were implemented to Goal Three. Focus is on our. Which rates to come. And this year. High heart, which is the 55% or 30%. And the statistics.
I have several questions on that. My question is, for all schools, parents, etc., at this time, a community liaison, a family liaison, and the schools that don't have a passion. But I do know that that really helps the parents more and welcome to have a place to go.
Yeah.
So I really wish that they would look into, you know, making it so welcome. That was our whole idea when we started this. And since you mentioned community liaisons, my second question is, Valleydale, that's not having a liaison since last year, and you know that we have more. And I do see, especially Medina, working very hard, but you know, that community liaison is usually the connection between parents and the school. And my question is, so how long, or do you have a nightmare, when we are going to get a community liaison at Valleydale? Well, they are doing a great job. I would consider about them not having one at that too, which has expanded. Thank you.
I'm currently in the process of building a showcasing that we have for community liaisons. One avenue that we have historically used has been the hotline for advertising provisions in our ED joint, and we're really doing our efforts to fill that.
Thank you.
All actions and services were fully implemented in Goal Four, and the budget expenditures are just.
Also, I see that there's 110% increase in parent participation in the circle. The target was a 15% increase from the baseline.
From the baseline. Back to it, there were.
Right. That's incredible. Continue to speak to that, I mean, some of those.
Well, I think, really, even though when we look at our metric and we say, oh, 15% increase from the baseline, which was back, I believe. We continue to try to grow that. My goal is really to increase that 10% every year. And I think. Enter by our. Liaisons in fact, and. Parents in our district. And last of all. Service. Metric for this. Facilities, and we have. A very good average to have, and our facilities are also. And look great. Great things going on. Ministers for Goal Five, as noted here on Slide 18. And we did implement all of our actions and services in Goal Five fully. That is, just a quick reminder, if you'd like more detail, we have the annual update section of the LCAP. And for those people looking ahead to the 2020, you're also able to do a kind of abbreviated version.
That was really nice. Someone will receive that. I really like that. Thank you, yeah.
And that is available in English and Spanish to everyone.
And who received a copy of the one that you just picked up here?
This one?
Yes. Who received a copy of them?
Everybody can get one.
No, my question is, you know, did parents get them, or did the staff get them? Yes?
Yeah, no. Hard copies are available. Hard copies to everybody.
I just think we can put them through the city. You know, we do have residents that are not necessarily parents, you know, seniors that do pay the taxes to our schools. A lot of times, they want to know what's going on here, you know, in our district. And like, you know, I have did it in the past, like took them to the library, water. I'd be happy to do that again, if, you know. And I just.
Thank you. Those to you. I do have copies.
Okay, great.
So let's, I mean, but I think.
I think the library, the light and water company, and the senior center, it's a good small place.
Yes.
Jennifer, let me also, I know that I've said this before, but again, because part of the PAC plus committee, a few years back. Just was moving away from. And I wondered, I was curious to know, you know, the quality that we'd be moving to. And I'm just. That's very clear. Just thank you for your work.
Thank you. And, you know, this is going to be an ongoing subject for us, as we look to write our LCAP for the next three years. And if you have any questions, please. We'll be circling back multiple times this year. Next, we have 10.3, Azuzi Unified School District Strategic Plan.
Well, good evening, Board President and members of the Board of Education and guests here at our meeting. We gathered a large group of about 45 people on September, December the day. What are our strengths, what are our challenges, what are we thinking in the next couple of years? What should we be planning on focusing over the next three years? And specifically, we meet where to focus in the next six months. And we're waiting for the slides. These 45 people represented board members, parents, community members, union representatives, and administrators. Very diverse, a broad-based group of people with different perspectives came together, share ideas, to learn from each other, and to think about what we can continue to improve our district. The group looked at our mission statement and added something important. So now it reads, "The Azuzi Unified School District equips every student with knowledge and skills to fulfill their purpose and positively impact society." A lot of room in there for a lot of good work for our kids and awareness that what we're doing here in our school system has an impact on the community, on the students' lives after they graduate. As the group, people brainstormed, what should be goals, where should we go? And then they came to consensus around these four goals. Not that they're in. So the first one is to provide innovative, relevant, rigorous learning environments. In other words, what students experience on a day-to-day basis is incredibly important. Make sure that we're viable as an organization, that we can bear, and we can continue to move forward. Make sure that we have strong partnerships with families and communities from a number of areas. Also seeing the students performing and the parents that were here, that this is a district that really values that engagement of families and community. And then the academic achievement for our students and all students, so that no student is left. I want to make sure that all are, in an important way. Once we had the mission, and once we had the big picture goals, we asked ourselves, what can we achieve in six months for each of these goals? So the first goal, to have innovative, relevant, and rigorous learning environments. The only things we identified as objectives, identify some really effective examples of elementary, middle, and high school classrooms that are showing what a rigorous learning environment looks like. To the board in November, the November 5th meeting. And then develop, and develop a pilot of how would you share that? Once you've identified some outstanding examples, how are you going to share that with students, with parents, classified staff, certificated staff, administrators? How are we going to make sure that other people get to see that? And then finally, come up with a plan to continue to spread that information throughout the whole district, so that by next year, we're able to make sure everybody has seen those examples. One of the other goals was to maintain fiscal solvency. And so that begins with early on, looking at what are some reductions that we could make, even this year, and begin to present those to the board by next week, or next meeting. And then keep our community, our teachers, our staff members, our parents informed about where we're going with budget issues. And budget is a very difficult situation throughout California. We know that our state funding level for schools is very, very low compared to other states. We rank about number 41 or 42 out of all 50 states. So we're among the lowest of all the states. If we lived in another state, we might have twice as much money to spend on our students and our staff and programs that we put in place. But we're here, and we have to make do, and try very hard to make do with what we do have. But sharing that information with people on a regular basis, so they understand the challenge, as well as the ideas we have for dealing with it. And then present to the board options to reduce our expenditures for the next year by $6.5 million. That's a huge amount of money for us. It will be a challenge, but that's what the group recognized needs to be done. The goal to strengthen partnerships with families and community. Short-term objectives for that are to, first of all, put together what's called an asset map of services and resources. And that is, well, what do we already have? What is available in our district and our community? What are the resources that we have, so we know what we can share with folks? And to have that ready by December 1st. And then look at our parent survey, to make sure that our parent survey is picking up information on how motivated are people? How engaged are they in participating, being part of our school environment? And so, as we continue refining our surveys, we'll get those questions, too. And then the academic achievement of our students, of all students and student groups. So one of the first things that we can do on that is, in particular, think about how we support our students who have an individual educational plan, or IEP. Provide a process for supporting inclusion in general education classes for students with an IEP. What that means is, we have classes for students who do not have an IEP, who are in the general educational program. And historically, school districts have had classes, separate classes, for kids who do have an individual education plan. And we know that, actually, there's a lot of research, that kids do better when we put them together, when we blend them, when children are in a classroom where all children are seeing and being expected to rise to a certain level of performance on our standards, and yet with supportive strategies to help them make that, make that achievement a reality. So look at that. How can we do that? And then also take time to listen to our students, our high school students, to ask them, what helps them be successful in school? And what help can we give them? What do they find successful or helpful, and what can we do? And to make sure that our teachers have an opportunity to work together within their content areas, particularly the secondary teachers, pull together the English teachers, pull together the math teachers. We actually just had a whole day when the history teachers got together, and this had long been planned, but we had a whole day for them to look at their new materials and plan their lessons together and develop what they were going to do implementing in their classroom, what they were going to be implementing. So we want to continue that work and provide more of them to the extent we can. And do that, just like this last one, we have a history. It's not just history teachers at one school, it's history teachers across the district, so they can hear what each other's, what they're saying, what they're doing, and what ideas they have, and share them as practices. So that's where we are, with a lot of work accomplished in just one day, with a lot of things that will need to be accomplished over the next six months. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to say a brief, just briefly about this whole process. I mean, I think you saw on that slide, who was involved, and I just want to point out two of the groups that I think were very important to be in the room and aren't usually in the room when you have this kind of strategic planning, and those were our parents and our students. So we have students from all three high schools, and we had parents from all different grade spans. And you could feel the value in the room from the questions they asked, from the insight they gave, even the ideas they have. So I really appreciated that. And I feel like it's pushing us in that path towards becoming this environment where we all really are vested owners of our district, because I think ultimately, that's what we want. We want our parents, our community to feel like these are their schools, these are their decisions that are being made, and that we're all in this together. So thank you. And just as a follow-up, just understanding, we're now embarking on this process with this consultant, where we're going to review this every six months. So this group that got together this last in September is going to meet again in February, review all of this, update it, do it again six months later. So this is not a plan that's going to sit on a shelf. This is really sort of a guide for how we're going to do some of this really important work.
And I want to say, I'm excited to, like I said, I was impressed by the process and by how much was able to be accomplished with that size of group and that amount of time. And I'm also excited to kind of explore what it looks like to have these six-month intervals of goals. Something that I think would be valuable to think about and include in the process as we're moving forward, is to have, I think it's important that we have six-month goals, but to even have some overarching, like some vision much further out, and then we can kind of break that down a little bit. And so I wonder how we might implement that. So we have a clearer picture further out than just the six months that we're doing.
So I think the way, I think in the facilitator's mind, those headings are our long-term three-year goals. But like I said, if they're not really aligned with, I think, just consensus internally, we have a chance to review that in six months, or now four months.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments on this? Great. Moving on, we'll move on to item 10.4, Measure K Capital Facilities Program Update.
So last spring, near the end of the school year, we had a similar item where we talked with everybody about what projects we were going to be working on, beginning in spring, continuing in summer, and then wrapping up near the, you know, the early fall. continuing in summer, and then wrapping up near the, you know, the early fall. And so now, what we're saying is, here's what actually happened. And some of the progress, we can definitely take ownership of and say, you know, we made this happen. Sometimes, though, there are things that the state decides to do or tell us, and that we have to follow state rules and timelines on. So we have a bit of a mix there. But I'm happy to say, the fencing projects at Dalton's and Slauson and Magnolia have gone very, very well. Dalton and Slauson are just about done. They're kind of on what's called the punch list items, and these are, you know, last-minute things. Maybe there's a screw missing here, or somebody noticed the, you know, the gate didn't close as well as they wanted to, and they go back and they wind up and fix up all the last items. Magnolia, if you drive by that school, you will see the fencing is the, what we call the field fencing, which is a heavy-duty chain link. It's vinyl coated, the color is baked on, so it's a very long-lasting product. That's all done around the backside, the back and the two sides of the school, and they're now working on the front, which is decorative steel, which is a little more, a little fancier for the front side of, and they're making progress on that. And then we've got some pictures to show you. There's Dalton. You can see some bollards there, those yellow cement pillars. Those are, were a change that we made to the project. We had not originally designed them, but one of the contractors who was getting ready to install the fence right behind it noticed that the fence was right up next to a carport and was worried that cars would back up, pull out of their carport slot, and accidentally bump into our fence. So we actually, he recommended, and then we thought it was a great recommendation, we moved the fence in eighteen inches on our property, and that left room to put in these bollards, so that people don't back into the fence. So we protect this investment. And there you can see an example of the decorative steel fencing, that's also at Dalton. The next slide is Slauson. Slauson has a huge property, and they got fencing around their field. And one more slide gets us to Magnolia, where you can see the, what we call the field fencing, that's the chain link, and you can see the gentleman putting in the periodic, really strong, heavy-duty rods for the front fencing. So that's the fencing projects. Now, the other big project that we had this summer was doing the underground utilities at Paramount. And just to review, and we started our project a number of years ago after the bond was passed in 2014. The board made a commitment, first and foremost, to finish off projects at schools that were not included in the bond that was passed in 2002. And there were five schools. It was three elementaries, Lee, Dalton, and Paramount, two middle schools, Slauson and Center, and then the two high schools were partially done, so to address all those things. And so in moving forward on this, people sometimes say, well, where do you start? Well, just like if you think about your house, if your house needed some help with a roof, if you needed to re-roof, you do that first, because you want to protect what's inside. So you always want to make sure the roof is in good shape. And so we started with the roofs. And then the second step is to do what's called underground utilities, and that's to make sure the water lines, the electrical lines, and the sewer lines, all of those are in good shape. And so if any of you have had to replace that at any where you live, you know, it's a big job, it's a messy job, you get tons of dirt, because you have to dig down trenches, but it's a necessary job. So we had this job at Paramount, and that project, we added a little bit of extra time to it. One of the issues that was quite interesting is, the school, if you're familiar with it, the classrooms are set in kind of rows. And in between each row, there's a walkway to the classroom doors and a grassy area with a tree. Well, all of that had to be dug up, because that's also where the trenches were going. And interestingly enough, we found some, what we call unexpected field conditions. When you see a field with grass, or even a little area between two rows of classrooms, it might look nice, but you don't know what's under it. Well, and we live in an area that often is very rocky, because of the hills right behind us. And sure enough, when they began to dig these trenches, they found something quite surprising in that space between these rows of classrooms. And that was an unusual thing, that in some areas, the land was, or the underground was very, very sandy and easy to dig through, but in other places, maybe just ten feet further down, it was very, very rocky, and we had to bring in specialized equipment to dig out those rocks to get our trenches. So that took an extra time. And then also, part of the project involved doing some work to the sidewalks, and the city wanted us to do more work than was typically required, and we agreed to do it, but that also took some extra time. But I'm happy to say, if you drive over there now, the fields look green, they have been hydro-seeded, which means they have spread out seed. However, it's not grass yet, it's painted green seed. It will eventually be grass, but right now, it's just green. Green, it looks like, you know, maybe it's green dirt, but it's actually seeds. Okay. And then you see some pictures. There's Paramount, and you can barely see the classroom buildings, all you can see is all the mounds of dirt, and you can see the trenches a little bit. That's kind of the before, and now the next slide is the after, as their whole asphalt area had to be redone. And actually, it was improved in the way the range was arranged, so it drains off, and it connects better with the walkways of the school, so we're happy about that. And then the next project is something that high schools have wanted for a very long time, and I see Mr. Fernandez here. Are you pleased with the new marquee? Yes. Both of our high schools, Glassman High School and Azusa High School, got new marquees as part of an upgrade for them. Now, you know, sometimes vendors will come to a school and say, you know, I can sell you a marquee for $20,000, which might be true for a very small, simple one, but it's over $100,000. By the time you get the electrical line in, and you get the marquee the size that you want, and with the resolution that you want. So we're really happy that our schools have a better way to advertise who they are and what's going on at their school. Now, there's some projects coming up this year, starting in fall. We are going to be working on fire alarms at a number of different schools. We expect that the work will take all the way into springtime. It'll be done after school hours, so that it doesn't interfere with schools. You don't want fire alarm bells going off while kids are in class. But we are expecting it'll be finished sometime in spring, maybe into summer. And then we are still moving forward with the track and field program over at Azusa High and Gladstone High School. That program has been designed and has been submitted to what's called the DSA, or Division of the State Architect. It's being reviewed. We think it's very close to coming out of DSA, which is the requirement before we can actually start. So we're looking forward to starting. We're hoping this year is not exceptionally rainy, so that it doesn't slow the project down more. But I'm hoping that, you know, a year from now, or maybe towards the end of next year, we'll all be saying, wow, what a great field that is, and maybe more kids want to play soccer, or football, or track, and be on it. One of the things that's nice about both of these projects is we've got a lot of bids on them, which means there was a lot of interest from contractors in going out for these projects. Another thing that's still in DSA is the new expanded parking lot over at the Adult Ed Center, which is formerly Gladstone Street. And as you recall, CR High School is on the east side of the campus, and the Adult Education is on the west side of the campus, and the west side had a parking lot, but because the adult school has been growing, they actually needed a larger parking lot. So we are waiting desperately, with bated breath, for the DSA to finish off the approval for that, too. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
I just want to say, it's really exciting to see that we're waiting from the DSA to get those fields approved, and I'm just really, really excited to see this groundbreaking happen, to get this going.
Thank you. You know, this is the time of year when a lot of people like to watch football on TV. And if you ever look at these artificial terrains that you see on TV, they're beautiful. Well, that's what we're going to have, too.
All right. Any other questions? Comments? Okay, moving on, we'll move on to item 11.1, Consent Calendar. The consent, all items under the Consent Calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. Anybody wish, does anybody wish to pull an item on the Consent Calendar? Okay, seeing that, is there, what is a student preferential vote?
Yes.
All right, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve 11.2 through 11.14.
It's just one item, 11.1.
I second.
Okay, there's a motion to approve 11.1 by Yolanda Rodriguez-Espana, seconded by Gabriela Arianas. Any discussion? Seeing that, place your votes, please. Moving on, we have, where am I? We have item 13.1, public, I'm now going to open the public hearing. Let me move these cranes here. Open the public hearing for sufficient textbooks. Anybody wishing to make public comment on us having sufficient textbooks, now would be the time to come to the podium and address the board? Okay, seeing that, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I make a motion to close.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion by Adrienne Greer, seconded by Gabriela Arianas, to close the public hearing. Any discussion by the board? Seeing that, place your votes, please. And I forgot the student preferential vote. Yes? Okay, thank you. With that, motion passes 5-0. Moving on, we have Resolution 192015 to approve, it's a resolution and approval of the sufficient textbooks. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
A second then.
Motion by Jerry Bibles-Vogel, seconded by Adrienne Greer. Any discussion? We're on item 13.2, Approval of Sufficient Textbooks Resolution. All right, any discussion? No? What is a student preferential vote? Yes? All right, place your votes, please. Motion passes 5-0. Moving on, we have item number 14.1, this is an information item, Public Disclosure of the Proposed Collective Bargaining Agreement Between the Azusa Unified School District and the Classified School Employees Association, Chapter 299.
What you have before you is the public disclosure. This is a information that outlines the tentative agreement, and it contains the language related to the on-schedule increase, as well as language that was agreed upon through negotiations.
Thank you. So moving on, I will now open the public hearing of the Proposed Collective Bargaining Agreement Between the Azusa Unified School District and the Classified Schools Association, Chapter 299. Anybody wishing to address the board during this public hearing is now requested to approach the podium? Okay, seeing that, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion by Gabriela Arianas, seconded by Yolanda Rodriguez-Espana, to close the public hearing. What is a student vote? Yes, please place your votes. Motion passes 5-0. We have item 14.3, Approve the Tentative Agreement Between the Azusa Unified School District and the Classified School Employees Association, Chapter 299. What, is there a motion? Motion by Gabriela Arianas, seconded by Jerry Bibles-Vogel. Any discussion? What is a student vote? Yes, okay, place your votes, please. Motion passes 5-0. Moving on, we have item 14.4, Approve Ratify University Student Fieldbook Agreement with the California Baptist University, Cal-Baptists.
I make a motion to approve 14.4.
Motion by Yolanda Rodriguez-Espana, seconded by Gabriela Arianas. Any discussion? Student vote? Yes. All those in favor, oh, please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Moving on, we have item 14.5, Consider Approval of Consultant Maria Socorro Varon, Resolution 192009. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve 14.5.
Motion by Yolanda Rodriguez-Espana, seconded by Jerry Bibles-Vogel. Any discussion?
Yes. I would like to thank Linda for sitting down with me and being able to explain. And one of the things that I would like to recommend for this consultant, I know that there was qualitative data that was collected from the community liaisons. However, I feel it's really, really important that we have both qualitative and quantitative data, just to be able to see what an impact this is, you know, bringing to our community liaisons, especially because it's our goal for, it's our meat and potatoes. So I look forward to this year, you know, to be able to go to one of the meetings and to be able to be present to see Mrs. Socorro Varon's work.
And I'd like to add that I want to thank Norma Camacho. I did go to her office to see this big binder that she had with references from the community liaisons from 2015 to 2019 regarding Socorro Varon, and her performance as a coach for the AUSD community liaisons. The notation that they had, that, you know, they've learned to work with their parents better, they've learned to do Peachjar and Gmail, they learned information regarding the immigration news and the deportation, they learned how to understand the dashboard and how to help their parents in the immigration services, Homeless Coalition, school and safety and school environment. And I also did speak to several community liaisons and parents, and I got positive feedback from her. So I feel that she's doing a great job. My question to that is, though, I know that she's been here five years. I just want to know, when are we going to just continue? I mean, she's trained them very well, don't get me wrong, but I just want to know, when are we just going to start working, you know, liaisons, you know, with their services, what they've learned, and without having to use Socorro in the future?
Yeah, and same, a couple of things. Linda, also thank you very much for the conversation we had to sit down and talk through some of this. And I had some similar thoughts as Gabriela about wanting to look at the type of data that we received to help us. So I did, I also went into Norma Camacho's office, same thing, went through the binder and read through everything on the binder. And I will say that in reading through the binder, I'm, once you read through it, you do get the, you know, the general sense that there's, that there's a positive sense of the work that's going on, and so I'm grateful for that. I feel like there's got to be a cleaner way for us as a board to be able to receive information, to be able to be empowered to, when we're approving consultants like this. I, it shouldn't, I don't think it should be that we have to sit and read a binder for an hour as a way of knowing, you know, how consultants are doing. So I guess, I'm not sure what that looks like. I would love to hear some thoughts on whether it's some sort of standardized process or, you know, within different departments, kind of describing some preferences that they might have, and showing us what they have in mind, how we can be better informed when we're making votes. And so I don't know that I have the answers on what that exactly needs to look like. I don't know if there's a team, and whether it's cabinet or directors that can look at that to help, you know, shape and put some of that together. But I think that would be extremely helpful for me and the rest of us to be able to make informed decisions when we're voting on these things. And similar to what you're saying, Yolanda, about when we have consultants that are coming in and doing work with us, I mean, I think that that can be an incredible thing. My hope is that we're using consultants in as many ways as we can to build capacity within our own district and within, you know, the personnel that we have, so that we can see them step up and be those that are training. We do that with our TOSSAs, I think, in incredible ways. That shows, some of the ways that we've moved away from some consultants in those areas. And so, yeah, I wonder if we can either set some goals... goals or some targets on some, on what that would look like to do that across different categories as well within the district.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay. May I have a motion on the floor right now? All right. What's the student preferential vote? Place your votes, please. Motion passes five zero. Moving on, we have, in, under Business and Finance, we have item fifteen point one, Ratify Approved Contract Between the Azusa Unified School District and the Marin County Office of Education. Is there a motion?
I agree.
Any discussion?
I would just like to say, explain a little bit to a few folks what this is about. Our district has made a really strong commitment to engaging parents and the community in all that we do. And you see it in the Al Cap work. You see it in the work of the community liaisons. You see it in the work of the principals of schools to reach out to parents and make sure that they're welcome and valued and, and full participants in what we do. And we've been recognized for being one of the outstanding districts in the state. This MOU is the result of us being invited to be a partner to show other people how to do it. And so it really is a compliment to us. We're very happy to participate and share what we know and, and continue to learn and how we can even get better.
Yes. I just would, I just want to clarify. So not that we were invited, but we had to apply, and it was a very competitive process, to be one of the only five districts chosen across the whole state around this, to do this work. So kudos to our, to our, the team that's working on this. And it's a cross-sector team, right, from parents to administrators. So, yes, very exciting. So there's a motion, and a second on the floor. Any questions? Okay, seeing none. What is a student vote? Okay, place your votes, please. Motion passes five zero. Moving on, we have item five point two, Ratify Approved Memor- is this, this is, these are both ratifications? So ratify memorandum of understanding with Azusa Unified School District and the Los Angeles County Office of Education. Is there a motion?
A second.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none. What is a student preferential vote?
Yes.
Yes? Okay, please vote. Motion, waiting. Motion passes five zero. And with that, we've exhausted our closed session agenda. We are going back into closed session to continue discussion around labor negotiations.